Good afternoon. Before we begin for the executive hearing in this public hearing for the appointment of Ms. Lina Opina-Guerrero to serve as a member of the public hearing, I mean Guam Housing Corporation, Board of Directors, it will be scheduled for a later date, so this will serve as a public notice. I call this public hearing to order at 1:22 PM. The public hearing for the Committee on Infrastructure Economic Development, Simon Sanchez High School, Disability Services Self-Determination Historic Preservation Housing Public Accountability Guam Build-Up is called to order at 1:23 PM. On Tuesday, April 18, this afternoon, the committee will hear testimony on the executive appointment of Mr. David John to serve as a member of the Guam Economic Development Authority Board of Directors. Notice for this afternoon's public hearing was provided to senators, stakeholders, and the local media April 11, 2023 for the five-day notice, April 16, 2023, 48-hour notice. Thus, the meeting, the requirements for open government law. In addition to the, to this notice hearing, was also posted and available on Guam Legislature's website. Materials for public hearing were shared in the committee drive and are available for print upon request. I now acknowledge my senator's present. Unfortunately, it's only Senator Telo Tydewe. Good, good. (laughter) Good afternoon, Senator Tydewe. As a chair, I would first like to recognize the individuals joining us and make sure you guys address your name and title and your testimony, okay? Questions and testimony shall be confined to the substance or nature of the agenda. Individuals speaking shall only use respectful language and professional language and professional conduct. Personal interference about the character or motive of any senator or any individual fighting is not permitted. The chairperson or committee on rule or committee may order the removal from the hearing or committee or subcommittee of any person who is not a member of Legislature Guam and who fails to observe proper decorum according to the 37th Guam Legislature Standing Rules. All must abide by these rules and conduct and quality assurance standards. Any violations of this rule or this conduct will result in the removal of the hearing. Thank you for your understanding and cooperation. Items, again, the committee will hear the testimony for executive appointment of Mr. David John to serve as a member of GIDA, Guam Economic Development Authority Board of Directors. Those testifying will be allowed to present written oral testimony. Testimony may be read and extended testimony should be summarized to five minutes. Written testimony shall be submitted to the committee. Please provide committees with your written testimony or photocopy. Once you are done, please remain in the room for questions or any additional testimony that might be desired by the body. I would like to call Mr. David John to the table. Ms. Melanie Mendiola. Tina, no. Yeah, just the two of you. No one else's testimony correct? I guess that's good, Mr. John. There's no objections, but the rest of the GIDA team's here for you.
Hope this is good.
Yeah, so, Mr. David John, I'll just give you the time to give your remarks.
Great, thanks, Senator. Good morning or good afternoon, Chairman Kanata, members of the 36th, 37th Guam Legislature. Thank you for taking the time for us. I'll be happy to make, I'll make sure my, make my comments brief and maybe I can read here in a second. Okay, my name is David John. I'm currently the chairman of the Guam Economic Development Authority. I've been a board member of GIDA since the start of the Calvo administration. I'm honored by Governor Leon Guerrero having confidence in me to continue my role with his agency. I hope you'll find me an acceptable candidate to continue as a member of the board for the fourth term. In my professional life, I'm managing director of ASC Trust LLC. ASC is a leading provider of retirement plan services in Micronesia, serving over 35,000 participants at $1 billion in assets. I'm also an active member of the University of Guam Endowment Fund and was recently appointed the chairman of the Archdiason Financial Council. Most importantly, I'm the husband of Teresa Adajon and together we have two sons, Pedro and Anthony, who are sitting behind me. He's in town for visiting his mommy. When I came before this committee four years ago, tourism had hit record highs and the construction of Camp Blas was well on its way. Being involved as an active member of the GIDA board, I was aware at that point in time that the feedback received from bond analysts and rating agencies that was echoed by Governor Leon Guerrero when she came into office was the need to diversify the economy. When COVID-19 hit and tourism went from all-time highs to zero tourists, the need to diversify became even more magnified. Before I get into our diversification efforts, however, let me share with you the urgency at the outset of the pandemic was life support for Guam's 2,000-plus brick-and-mortar establishment. GIDA launched multiple programs to provide a lifeline of support, starting with the small business pandemic assistance grants in 2020 to the local employers' assistance grants in 2022. On this program, I want to acknowledge GIDA's team efforts to involve the entire private sector in the design of the program to ensure the program's investment was leveraged to do the most good, and from the response I've received from the business community, I think the team nailed it. Even now, as the funnel of struggling businesses narrows down to those heavily involved in tourism, we still find ourselves providing support through what we hope to be the funding for the next LEAP supplemental grant program. The grant total of aid passing through GIDA's doors since 2020 equates to well over $130 million. I'm proud to steward such support and I'm equally proud of the team who rose to the occasion time and time to mobilize, help quickly and effectively within the federal guidelines. And I acknowledge that they did this a lot on their own time, putting in their own hours after hours. In keeping with our efforts to work with the community, we encouraged Governor Leon Guerrero to invite the Guam Chamber of Commerce to impanel a diversification task force to look at opportunities that could benefit our island. We resurrected some legacy projects, such as the captive insurance trust, and launched new initiatives in alternative manufacturing or 3D printing, ship repair, agriculture, aquaculture, pharmaceutical, and technological opportunities. We've seen a lot of activity in the alternative manufacturing, ship repair, and technology opportunities centered around cable landing and data centers already. In fact, today, at today's roundtable, the team will be reporting on what we have learned and progress made in the various industries. However, to take these opportunities to the next level, we need to make sure that permitting is timely, we have an educated workforce for the skills required for the job, of which I'm excited that many of the jobs in the industries we're working on are trade skills that pay very well. And if the government land is needed for these projects, that we come up with a solution for leasing lands that extends beyond five years, which is not near enough time for a financial lease. I have ideas on these areas of concern if you'd like to discuss them in more detail. If approved by the body, I would like to work to continue to strengthen the qualifying certificate programs and focus the efforts of the agency on economic diversification efforts. We currently have seven applicants who have expressed interest in the QC program in the areas of waste mitigation, circular economy, affordable housing, insurance, and tourism. This is more action in the QC space than we've seen in decades. To properly navigate the balance between what to attract outside investors without giving away the house has been a challenge for the years, but something I'm comfortable to discuss is that we've reformed the process and continue to build a sharper incentive program. Lastly, I want to point out the great amount of work GIDA has done, particularly in the last four years with emerging small businesses through our incubator GUMA project, the state trade and export program, and our lending initiatives. At one time, GIDA was known for bonds and QC's, and we're all, we are now a great resource for entrepreneurs to check in when they are contemplating their great leap. I want to keep my comments short, so I'll throw it open any questions that you might have. Thank you.
We'll just go ahead and hear Ms. Melanie's hearing testimony first.
All right. Hafaday Chairman Kanata and members of the committee, Senator Tydewe. My name is Melanie Mendiola and I'm the administrator/CEO of the Guam Economic Development Authority. I have served since the first term of Governor Leon Guerrero and solely under the chairmanship of David John. I knew the nominee prior to then primarily through my involvement in the financial services industry and my time as the executive director of the UOG Endowment Foundation. At GIDA, we are considered a small agency with under 50 employees. The role of the board is to steer the agency strategically, supervise me, and ultimately carry out the mission of the organization to build a sound and sustainable economy that makes the lives of the people of Guam better. During Chairman John's leadership, we have achieved multiple milestones, including the following. In the years prior to his chairmanship, the Office of Public Accountability issued a scathing report about how community qualifying certificate, community contribution money was allocated towards nothing but agency travel and special interests. Under the leadership of Chairman John, we created the QC Community Contribution Grant Program, which has since passed over $1.8 million to over 87 nonprofits and agencies for projects related to culture, sports, tourism, education, economic development, and education. During the COVID-19 pandemic, Chairman John facilitated the meeting of industry stakeholders with the governor, who ultimately directed over $130 million in direct aid to Guam's small businesses. His leadership involved overseeing the creation and passage of SOPs and getting aid to the community in a timely manner within the resource constraints of the agency and in compliance with federal and local law. The governor called on GIDA to assist public health with the childcare industry where millions of dollars were at stake to be lost. Under Chairman John's leadership, we quadrupled the enrollment in the childcare block grant program, issued millions to make daycare safer for kids, and expanded after-school offerings for Guam's youth population. Additionally, every village mayor has been recently approved for up to $600,000 for youth programs. This boon to the childcare industry is now showing the fruits of its labor as people are getting back to work and daycares, although expanded, are continuing to hit capacity. It looks like we will continue to do more with, more work with public health in the coming years. And then, under the leadership of Chairman John, the GIDA team has facilitated over $100 million in bond payment savings and cash flow savings and the upgrade of the general ratings outlook from negative to stable and, for the first time, stable to positive since Moody's started reviewing the Guam credit in 2017. Under the leadership of Chairman John, Guam was approved $61 million under the state small business credit initiative, of which the first tranche of $17 million arrived locally in this fiscal year for our lending and venture capital programs. In our real property space, Chairman John oversaw the collection of back rents from Guam Incestral Lands Commission tenants, which dated back to previous administrations and amounted to just under $5 million owed to the Land Bank Trust account. Under his leadership, GIDA went from doing very little for small businesses to offering pandemic aid discussed previously, forging ties with local incubators, including GUMA, and subsequently providing seed funding to local entrepreneurs and export, and export support of around $1 million to over 15 new businesses. Lastly, under his leadership, we have a federal active grant-seeking arm of the agency who has assisted in securing millions in just the last two years in federal aid toward economic development initiatives. Chairman John and I have a terrific working relationship, and in times where we do not agree, I find that he's open to an exchange, to a great exchange of ideas. He holds the agency to the standards of the many corporates he has deep experience running over the decades of his distinguished career. I appreciate that, as I believe GIDA is an excellent training ground for business professionals in the community, including myself. On a personal note, I appreciate the fact that Chairman John is a man of faith and his actions on the board speak to his standards of ethics, fairness, and doing what is right. As we continue to serve the people of Guam, it is imperative we have knowledge, expertise, and compassion at the helm of the agency. I urge the committee to hastily confirm Chairman John for another term at the Guam Economic Development Authority, and I'm, of course, available for questions as well. Seuss Bossi.
Thank you, Ms. Mendiola. At this time, I'll go ahead and yield to Senator Telo if she has any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Good afternoon. Good afternoon to everyone who's here. With regards to your position, this will be your, you said, fourth term. How many, how many terms are there? I mean, how many years are there in a term?
Four, yeah.
So, four, okay. So, basically, this will be your fourth term?
Yes.
If you should, okay.
Correct.
So, basically, you've been sitting here in this position for 12 years?
Not as chairman, but as board, yeah.
But on the board for 12 years?
Yeah, I was eight years, yes, under the Calvo administration. I served chairman for the last one or two months of...
And in that time, have you ever recused yourself for a conflict of interest?
I don't sit on anything that has to do with finances, with, like, our own investment finances or banking, because my relationship with the Bank of Guam, besides that, I can't remember if I did, but I don't think so other than that. I stay completely out of that. Vice Chairman June Espaldón handles all that.
But there is still voting required, right, on the board whenever approving things like loans, grants, things like that?
Yeah, I can't remember. I can't think of any time that I actually recused myself from any vote. As chairman, I don't vote, but prior to that, I don't, I can't remember of any.
So, you don't, you've never recused yourself?
I don't think so. I mean, I can't think of any time.
Do you find there might be a conflict of interest because of your position?
With the bank, it could be. That's why I've stayed away from anything that has to do with the...
But like I said earlier, you still vote as a board. I mean, on, no, it's all broken up in different categories and...
No, I'm a chairman, so as chairman, I would only vote if there's a tie break. So, I, I don't, it could come up, but I, and I certainly would. I won't go anywhere near anything where I think there's a conflict of interest from a vote on a, on a, on a board for a, for a community board. I have other things to fry in life. Yeah, I just, I, it's not, it's not something I would do.
Well, you know, 12 years is a long time. How do you feel about limited terms for board members for GIDA?
I, I, I think I'm stretching it, yeah. If you, you know, I think this will be my last go-around. It's been two different administrations, as far as things go, and, and COVID was kind of like a timeout for everything also. I don't think we got a lot, we didn't do a lot of the things we would like to have done. You know, we were, we were, we were in, you know, neck-high in, in health things, in, in pandemic grants, and so we didn't do a lot of the things that, I kind of think that's kind of a timeout. But, but yeah, I can't imagine coming here a fifth time. I think that this, pass it off the reins to somebody else.
So, so you don't, you have no objections to...
None at all.
Limited terms for board members?
In fact, I kind of like that on boards, because sometimes you get to a situation where you don't want to ask somebody to step off, kind of creates an awkward moment. So, having, having time restraints, I think, I think for everything, I think for, I think legislatively, I think that should be for senators, I think it should be for board members, not just public, but...
Well, with senators, it's a little bit different. The public votes the person in.
Yeah, no, no.
Unlike board, they're appointed.
Yeah, but I think that there's times where it can be a nice turnover and kind of, kind of forcing seats off. I think it's a great idea. I have no issue with it.
Okay. Well, don't get me wrong, you know, I appreciate that you wanted, you know, utilizing your time to give back to the community.
And I did, I did rethink it, I'm like 12 years, but then I thought, COVID, we didn't get a lot done. I'll give it, you know, I would, I would like to do it one more time, but I get that.
Okay, well, I'm glad to hear that, you do believe in limited terms, you know, for board. It provides a different perspective and different eyes and different ideas coming to the table, which is, is definitely needed. So, I appreciate your, can, you know, your honesty that it should be limited.
Yep.
And, and of course, appreciate the time that you did serve, the 12 years that you were on the board. The other question I had was regarding Citizen Centric Report. Do you get involved, does the board get involved with the Citizen Centric Report at all?
No, Senator, for the most part, that is an internally created document that is informed by the, primarily by the audit and designed graphic, the graphic arts. We do it either in-house or we have a marketing company put together the graphics and then it's posted by law on our website, and we turn it in as well to the, I think it's the, the organization that handles the accounting, the, I'm sorry, the name slips my mind, but the, the Association of Government Accountants, A G, Association of Government Accountability. We turn that one into them as well as the OPA. The board sees it, they can, they provide comments, but because the, we consider the CCR to be the great, the, the board does have to, actually, let me take a step back, Senator. The board, when the audit is complete, the annual audit, that is reported to the board, and the board is given a chance to review and accept the audit. Now, excerpts of that audit is taken and put on the CCR as highlights, highlights, greatest hits, and things along those lines. So, while that is provided to the board, it's not required that the board votes on it or adopts the CCR.
Mr. John, can you request for the, the management to audit certain programs? Like, for instance, you talked a lot about how the LEAP program was one of the loans that were put out and such. Can you request as a board member? I mean, you're the chairman of the board, can you request to do an audit, especially for the LEAP program?
Certainly, and I think with all the programs that are federal money are audited just by process, right? Yeah, so I mean, certainly, the LEAP has to be audited, that's going to be a big one. I mean, it's from a dollar standpoint.
Has it been audited yet?
It's not closed out yet, so...
There, there are multiple stages to the audit process, Senator. So, incorporated into the SOPs is an internal audit that takes place with our compliance team. So, our compliance team samples, so, let's say, for example, there's 2,000 recipients, then the internal team will look at a sample of 200, and then they will prepare a report to, a compliance report, which they then present to the board. That has occurred for all of the programs with the exception of the LEAP program, because that is the one that, that is continuous, that's, that's the one that's being updated, continuous, right now, actively updated. The Office of Public Accountability has audited our initial programs, the Small Business Pandemic Assistance Grant 2020, as well as our, one of our smaller programs, which was the Rent Assistance Grant, and provided that public report, that report publicly. And then, we do also fall in, under the federal compliance-type reports, and so the government's single audit, or the government's consolidated audit, as well as GIDA's audit, covers the grant expenditures, although the checks aren't cut out of GIDA, the checks are cut out of DOA. So, there's some overlap with what's covered compliance-wise at GIDA and what's covered at DOA. And then for, to address your question specifically, is the board able to make requests of audits? Sure, it's, you know, there, there are different things that you could look at, like a, like a performance audit, like they could say, was the timeliness, what was the average timeliness or service? If they, if they receive service reports, if someone called one of them and said, "I have a concern about how that my, my, my account was handled." A board, any board member certainly has the, has, can, can request that of us without any issues.
Thank you, thank you, Mel. Mr. John, have you requested to, you know, see some of the documents on, as, the audit isn't complete yet, but you know, as they move forward to its completion, have you asked to, like, keep tabs on, you know, making sure that first come, first served is applied and that nobody's jumping ahead of the line to get any grants or loans? Are you following through with that?
Yeah, no, I've, I've not asked for any audit of that or any, like, listing of who's going in what order, no.
I think you should.
Well, you know, if you'd worked with this team, you'd realize is, it really is a, we're helping with the policy side of it. Sometimes we get in, into the, into the weeds. I got into the weeds a lot during, during, during the COVID crisis, more just trying to help set up SOPs and such. But once the SOPs are in place, I've just never had any experience where I know when I turn the reins over to the, to the team that it wasn't going to get followed through on. So, help set up the guidance of things and they've, they've delighted, I mean, they've, they've exceeded expectations almost every time out of the gate. So, I, you know, I've never had an audit come back that I've seen something that, that, that made me concerned, so going forward, I would, I would have deeper eyes on something. So, from that perspective, it's just not been a big part of what I do, and, you know, that would be my answer to that one. Sorry.
Well, as a chairman of the board, I think you should, you know, put your nose into everything that goes on, you know, over at GIDA.
Well, I mean, we looked through the process, right? And we've seen the number of things going on.
Regardless of their SOPs, I mean, you need to follow through. You don't want to wait until a mistake happens or something falls through the weeds and then later on, you're kicking yourself because you didn't, you know, look at it beforehand or found, found a mistake that needed to be corrected before it goes, you know, even further. So, I, you know, that's the involvement, I think, of the board, you know, just, do you also, do you do a, what is that, an assessment of the general manager? The general manager is...
Yes, we do an annual review, yeah, definitely. She's, I mean, she's under our purview for hiring and firing, but we will not fire her.
Okay, and how many times, once, once a year?
We do it every year. We do it annually. It's just a matter of process. It gets back to what Mel and her team have done. We set up SOPs, very strong SOPs, and we, we expect delivery of them, and the board expects that what we've put in place with them are being followed, and we've never, I can't, I mean, I'm sure there's situations, everyone makes mistakes, everyone drops the ball now and then, but I really can't sit here and think about it in a situation where a process wasn't followed. Mistakes are made, people, you know, they, they make a bad decision, I make bad decisions, like we all do along the way, but the processes are followed, I think, to the T. I mean, it's just such, it's a great team to work with. It's a, it's a...
Oh, believe me, I know.
You've done, yeah, right?
I've worked at GIDA, and they're a bunch of hard-working individuals and very intelligent, you know? I've worked with Tina, Tina's been amazing, and I still call her to this day if I have any questions, you know? And, of course, as I've worked with Mel and she's been amazing, some of the comments that she made, I have legislation that's going on session next week, you know, to assist GIDA in, in putting things in order. And I think, you know, that's one of the things I like most, especially about Mel, is that, you know, you're, you're putting them in the space, they need to go, it's easy to find out whether there is a mess-up, because it's all easily categorized, you know? And cleaning up, cleaning house. So, you know, I always offer myself to assist GIDA when moving forward. So, my last question, Mr. Chair, I want to leave with this. Why do you want to still sit on the board, Mr. John?
I'd like to follow through with what we had, what we had started with the qualifying certificate programs and the diversification efforts are the big one. I really think that, you know, as a community, you know, tourism has been, has been a very good industry for us, and of course, all the federal spending with the things that are going on with Camp Blas and everything else is great for the econ, the economic side of the island. But COVID, you know, was a wake-up call to us, I think, that we need to diversify our economy and to get into other industries within the constructs of where we are and who we are and, and skill sets of, 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 of our, of our population, which I think is, is great. So, I really want to see movements in the 3D manufacturing processes, the ship building, the technology areas, and what I really like about this sweet spot, I said it in my comments, is that I don't think every, every, everyone should go to college. I know it's, it's, but we all need to be advancing in training, and the, the majority of the jobs of what we're shooting for are, it's skilled labor, it's, it's, it's skills that can be done through community college, that can be done through apprenticeship programs, and they're good paying, this is what we're shooting for, solid-paying jobs that can support a family. And I would really like to help leave that as, as, as my mark on the way out, that we've, that we've, that we've had some success in our diversification of, of, of the economy, specifically in those areas, in aquaculture and agriculture also right along with that. But I think there's some really good opportunities out there right now staring us down, and I'd like to be a part of that.
Well, thank you so much for answering my questions, and I greatly appreciate you wanting to step up to the plate, and, you know, I, I think GVB is going to be making some phone calls to you guys on the setup of your agency, because they're having some issues with their bylaws and their enabling legislation, and I think they want to try and mirror it after GIDA's setup, so that's something that...
I just got caught at lunch, I was on the way out the door to come down here, and someone asked me, "Can you send me your bylaws?" I said, "Yeah, I'll send them down." So, they already did.
Yeah, great, great, yep, exactly what's going to happen. So, again, I appreciate your time and, of course, your great staff that I've had the opportunity to work with. It's always good to see them again. Thank you so much.
Thanks, Senator.
It was a pleasure meeting you yesterday.
Nice to see you again.
So, you know, it is my understanding you deal with millions of dollars, and I think that we're very blessed for all your expertise. You do, you deal with millions of dollars privately and in the government agencies, and you guys were executing numerous grants and opportunities for the people. You guys have been able to stand up programs in a heartbeat, and for that, I don't think there's really any further questions for you. And for that, I don't think there's really any further questions for you, Director. Do you have, is there any concerns that I should, any issues I should be concerned over, Mr. John?
No, no, sir, not in his capacity as the chairman of GITA. There might be issues just in general, but no. I'm joking. No, it's been, it's been a pleasure to work with, it's been a pleasure to work with Chairman John over the last, I think I speak for the entire team. He challenges us without, he challenges us without micromanaging us and he stewards the ship very, very effectively. And I think that it's, one of the reasons when you said, when Senator Tidigui asked, "Why do you want to serve?" And I almost, the default answer for me was, "Because I called him and I said, 'Come on, sir, you're gonna, what do you mean you're not gonna? What are we gonna do? What are we gonna do?'" You know? So I think there's, there's a, there's a level of comfort and a level of, when you have consistency in management. And I 100% agree with Senator Tidigui that, for the most part, a lot of times you need new blood and that's why a lot of times term limits are important. But to note, when, when there's a board, the chairman sets the tone of leadership that's followed by the members of the board. And he's really only been the chair for four out of the last 12 years. And I think what you've seen is, under his leadership, there's been transformation of the agency versus participation and input. And a lot of times, the first term of a, of a, of a board member, especially if it's their first time serving on a government board, I think we've all observed this. It's learning and not trying to make too many waves. And so I think that a leadership position such as a good chairman is hard to, a good chairman or chairwoman is hard to come by. And so I certainly appreciate the volunteerism, the spirit of volunteerism that he has to continue to serve at the capacity that he's serving.
Thank you. I definitely agree with your statement regarding individuals not needing to, you know, pursue higher education. I think we need to find another holistic approach for individuals to find their niche in life. I don't, I personally didn't graduate with a degree, although a lot of people told me that I should have run for office unless I have a degree. But I told them I got PhD, public high school diploma. But, you know, I definitely think we need to have more investment in people's personal lives and they, they should have more opportunities out there instead of just higher education. And I look forward to working with GITA to find not only other programs to shore up our island's economic diversity, but the other, other than that, I don't really have any questions for you. You've been there for 12 years. You can be there another 12 years. But, you know, I just want to ask your son, should your dad continue to serve? You approve? Does your mom approve? Okay. Okay, well, I'm sure your family gives you blessings to continue your service. And again, I thank you for your public service. I'm sure there's a lot of issues that arise that you've helped find the navigating, you've helped navigate those channels and all those issues as they arise. Again, really no questions, no objections to your service. So thank you and look forward to confirming you on the floor.
Great, thanks, Senator.
Thank you. If there are no further testimonies or questions for the Committee on Infrastructure Economic Development, Simon Sanchez High School, Disability Services, Self-Determination, Historic Preservation, Housing, Public Economy, and Guam Build Up, the committee, the committee will now, the public hearing will continue to receive testimony until 4:00 PM Tuesday, April 25, 2023. Please address your testimony to Senator Roy A. B. Kanata, Chairperson, Committee on Infrastructure Economic Development, Simon Sanchez High School, Disability Services, Self-Determination, Historic Preservation, Housing, Public Economy, and Guam Build Up, and can be dropped to the mailroom here at the Guam Congress voting or sent to the Office of Senator Kanata at guamlegislature.org or WhatsApp to 472-4826. The public hearing is now concluded at 1:56. Thank you.